Good evening, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Riceinger. I am the Chair of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Baltimore City Council. We're here this evening to conduct our seventh work session on City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our sixth work session held on Tuesday, March 11th, we completed pages 77 through line 16 of page 85. On today, we will start on page 86, which is Title V, and work on as much as we can during tonight's session. And it's two hours. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title I and continuing through the bill in the order that is written. City agencies and public will be asked to participate by raising the questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page they have a comment or question regarding. I encourage everyone to visit the City Council website, which is www.baltimorecitycouncil.com, to stay updated with the section of that bill the Land Use and Transportation Committee is working on at each work session. In addition to the currently scheduled series of work sessions, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will likely hold, well, will hold additional hearings and work sessions. Information about these will be distributed to the public as soon as dates, times, and topics are selected. Again, please check the Baltimore City Council website for the most up-to-date information. If you are unable to attend the scheduled work session and you wish to provide written comments or amendments, please mail it to the Office of Councilimatic Services. Attention to Antoine Banks at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21202, or email We are joined by my colleagues, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark to my right, to her left is Councilwoman Ricky Spector, to her left is the President of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young, to my right is Councilman Jim Craft, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my left is Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton. I've seen him here. He just got a haircut. Councilman Bill Henry is here somewhere. Okay. We're also joined by Andy Smalling in the audience representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. Also, we have Kara Kunst, who is representing, to the President's right, Kara Kunst is representing President Bernard Jack Young. I think that's it. So, we are ready to start on page 86, Title V, Applications and Authorizations. As courtesy, the President of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young, has a number of amendments. So what we're going to do is, he's going to go through all his amendments. You should have them in front of you, page by page, and then after that, if there's any questions or answers to his amendments or response, then you can respond to it. I think the President has another commitment to attend, so, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to everyone. On page 86, at line 9, these are my amendments. Insert the following before the words "and" and "application for." Except for variance conditional uses, text and map amendments introduced as legislation pursuant to Subtitle V of this title. And after the word "use permit," insert "design review." And delete lines 15 to 23, and insert at line 15, "If legislation had been introduced on the subject provided in Section 5-2-1A1 of the subtitle 'On behalf of the owner of property to which the legislation applies, the property owner or a person expressly authorized by the property owner in writing must submit an application pursuant to the Subtitle II." These amendments clarify that an ordinance can be introduced at any time. An individual property owner may file an application either before or after legislation is introduced, but the administrative application process does not affect the City Council's legislative process. On page 88, line 12, strike "Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals." This cleans up the section by having applications all go through the zoning administrator, deleting the BMZA. Makes this language match page 86, where it says, "Applications are submitted to the zoning administrator." On page, am I going too fast? On page 88, strike lines 22-24, and renumber B and C as A and B at lines 25 and 29. This deletes a reference to comprehensive rezoning that isn't necessary and is unclear. Comprehensive rezoning isn't an application, so this does not belong here. On page 90, at line 4, after the words "regulations of this code," insert "of up to 25% of the applicable regulation in accordance with the criteria specified in Section 5-308 of this title, any greater variance must be authorized by legislation." This amendment adds language to clarify that BMZA may not authorize variance greater than 25%, same as today, and gives the council the authority both to issue variances and issue variances greater than 25%. On page 90, delete lines 7 to 12. Make line 12, Item 1, letter A, and Item 2, letter B. Renumber the items labeled 1 and 2. And on page 90, line 13, strike "It is determined that the application is complete," and insert "The zoning administrator has determined that an application is complete." This deletion makes this language conform to the First Amendment back on page 86 at the beginning of Title V. It also clarifies that the zoning administrator gets applications and determines if they are complete. On page 91, line 5, after the words "major variance," insert the words "by BMZA." Section 5, 305, is about how BMZA were here, major variance. So adding BMZA to the title of 5-305 puts that information up front. On page 92, line 17 to 18, delete the zoning administration, I mean, the zoning administrator or the BMZA, as the case may be, "may find," and insert "A finding must be made." On page 92, line 24, delete the words "the zoning administrator or the BMZA, as the case may be, must also find," and insert "A finding must also be made." This section has approval standards applied to all variants that the City Council or BMZA will approve, so the deletion of these two lines make the language generic to both City Council and BMZA approvals. On page 94, delete lines 1 to 4, renumber subsequent sections. This is another section that is unnecessary because the first-page amendments clarify how applications are complete. On 94, delete lines 6 to 8, and on page 94, line 11, amend lines 10 to 12 to read, "The zoning administrator must determine if an application for a conditional use is complete and forward the completed application to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals for its consideration and action on the application." Renumber 5403 as 5402. This amendment clarifies what the zoning administrator does with applications for conditional uses that will require BMZA actions. Renumber section as, renumber section 5404 as 5403, and renumber 5405 as 5404. The Law Department amendment on page 95, at the end of line 20, insert the following language, "Any condition imposed pursuant to this subsection must be reasonably related and roughly proportional to the expected impact of the conditional use." For clarity, we've integrated the Law Department's amendment into this interliniated copy, but we defer explanation of this to the Law Department. Renumbering 5406 as 5405, renumbering, and this is on page 95, I'm sorry. Page 96, renumber 5407 as 5406, and renumber 5408 as 5407, and renumber 5409 as 5408, and renumber 54110 as 5409. On page 98, line 24, delete zoning amendments and replace with legislative authorization. This subtitle talks about the City Council legislative authority. renaming this section makes it clear that this is about zoning amendments, PUDs, variance, master plans, or any other land use legislation the City Council is responsible for. And also on page 98, strike line 26-28, insert at line 6, "This subtitle applies to all legislative authorizations created under this zoning code." This amendment clarifies that the subtitle is about the City Council's broad legislative authority. Page 99, delete lines 1 through 14. These lines are deleted because it discusses council members applying to introduce a bill. The City Council can introduce a bill whenever they deem it necessary and will not use an application process. On page 99, renumber section 5, 504 as 5, 503. On page 15, delete submission, and on page 99, delete lines 16 to 20. At line 21, renumber B to A and add words "and" and "agencies." On page 99, amend lines 22 to 24 to read, "When a bill is introduced on subject provided in Section 5-201 of this title, the bill must be referred to the Planning Commission and the Board of Municipal Zoning and Appeals for their consideration and written recommendation as well as any other agency or department designated by the President." On page 99, at the line 24, insert traffic mitigation language as written on page 101, lines 24 to 36. And on page 99, delete lines 25 to 30. This section looks a lot like, this section looks like a lot of amendments, but what it does is delete the more language about submitting application to the zoning administrator and clarifies that after a bill is introduced, it will be referred to the Planning Commission, BMZA, and other agencies as the President designates. Renumber section 5, 505 as 5, 504. On page 99, at line 33, insert upon submission of a bill for consideration, and strike the words "A proposed zoning amendment" on line 33 and replace with words "the bill." On page 100, line 14, delete the word "application" and insert the word "bill." The small changes in the section clarify that a bill has been introduced. The Planning Commission then has a public hearing process. It also changes the word "application" to "a bill" because it is about the process bills go through. On page 100, delete lines 29 to 36. On page 101, delete lines 1 to 36. On page 102, delete lines 1 through 8. The deletion on this page reflect the amendments from page 98 to 99 that clarify that the City Council introduced a bill first, and then that bill is sent to the Planning Commission and other agencies for their report. Renumbering 5, 507 as 5, 505. On page 102, line 12, strike "To be held 90 days without introduction." And on page 102, line 14, insert "A bill authorizing a variance under the standards provided in Section 5-308 of this subtitle." Strike the word "the bill" on line 14, and insert the words "Any other bill must be evaluated." On page 102, strike lines 17 to 23. At line 17, insert the words "The City Council may approve, amend, or disapprove any legislative authorization." This session, this section discusses what action the City Council takes on bills. First, the deletion on line 12 clarifies that the City Council does not have to hold a hearing on the land use bill within 90 days. The addition of language on line 14 about variances clarifies what standards the City Council will use to approve variances. Lastly, the deletions of line 17 to 23 remove language that only talks about zoning text and map amendments, and simply states that the City Council can approve, disapprove, or amend any bill that comes before it. Renumbering section 508 as 5, 506. On page 103, at line 27, insert the findings of fact language after 2, and make the determination required by subsection B1 of this section. The City Council must make findings of facts that address population changes, availability of public facilities, let me go back, address number one, population changes, number two, the availability of public facilities, number three, present and future transportation patterns, number four, compatibility with existing and proposed development for the area, five, the recommendation of city agencies and officials, and six, the proposed amendment consistent with the city's comprehensive master plan. On page 103, at line 27, renumber current two additional standards, general as three on page 104, at line 9, three additional standards, rezoning from 11 District 4. And on page 104, delete lines 1 to 8. The City must use the state land use article's findings of fact when approving rezoning bills. This bill puts those findings of facts under the heading "Additional Standards," which is after the section titled "Required Standards." This amendment deletes the reference to findings of fact from the "Additional Standards" section at the top of the page 104 and moves it up under the section titled "Required Findings" on page 103. Renumber section 5, 509 as 5, 507. Add the words "and hearing requirements" to page 105, 911. This section includes information about how notice is given to the public, as well as how hearings will be held, so when we suggest tightening this section, notice and hearing requirements, to make it clear this section has information about providing notice and holding hearings. On page 105, line 12, delete the word "City Council." This is the first of three amendments that I'm going to propose to this subtitle. Here on page 107, and on page 108, I delete the words "City Council," "BMZA," and "Zoning Administrator" from each of the sections hitting. These amendments make it clear that the information in these three sections is about the type of notice the applicant is going to give the public before a hearing is held. On page 107, line 7, delete the words "BMZA." On page 107, line 9, insert the "City Council," and after the words "conditional uses." In addition to deleting BMZA from this section hitting, I add the word "City Council" to line 9 because both the BMZA and City Council will be hearing major variances and conditional uses. On page 108, line 7, delete the word "zoning administrator." This is the third amendment that makes it clear that the information in the section is about how hearings for minor variances will be held. And finally, on page 109, delete line 11. On line 12, delete words "also provide" and "and comma" after the word "additional." On page 109, insert "may be provided," after the words "for all public hearings." This amendment clarifies that electronic notice can be provided for any public hearing under this code. And that's the end of the amendment. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are joined by Councilwoman Carl Stokes to my right, also there is Councilwoman Bill Henry. We're also joined by Angela Gibson, representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. Anything else, Mr. President?
No, that's it for me, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Now, we will go back to page 86. That was the President of the City Council's.
Can we ask questions about this amendment?
Yes.
And this, it's not a substantive question. It's more of a style one. It's when, when we were, when, at the very end, on pages 107 and 109, I'm sorry, 107 to 108, when you're removing zoning administrator, BMZA, and City Council from the subtitle, from the headings, do we have to remove the hyphen, or will that, does that automatically come out if you don't have something in front of it?
I think we technically, we need to remove that.
Okay, so can we, we can just add that, like, the words and then the hyphen for each of those three? Okay.
Duly noted. Duly noted. Councilwoman Clark?
That's quite a lot of work, thank you, Mr. President. So that we can follow it in context, I really appreciate the fact that we have been provided with an interliniated copy, but we, I would request that we now go back the way we, with these amendments that have been presented, and go, take them in context, page by page, so that we can absorb the, what, you know, in context, what each means.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to do that.
Okay.
Any other council questions to regards to the President's amendments? Yeah. Okay, we're now going to go back and start on page 86 for Title V, Applications and Authorizations, so, Subtitle II. Is there any other amendments to page 86? Page that down to...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joan Floyd for the record. Yeah, this, this section as written actually does not provide for the filing of a zoning appeal by a neighbor. And, and actually, that's a conflict with the land use article. The land use article does provide for, under 10, 405, it provides for an appeal to the Board, may be filed by a person aggrieved by a decision of the administrative officer. So, and it's a, it's a big, you know, omission in the draft of the code, that they, you're talking about zoning appeals, but you are not including aggrieved neighbors.
But you, yeah, this, page one is to deal with the, this is basically application, so...
Sorry. A zoning appeal, zoning appeal, it says right there.
So is, do you have an amendment, or are you talking about the procedure to the Law Department? Could you...
Well, I think, I think Ms. Floyd's talking about something substantive, right? You're talking about something, so we would probably, and I don't have that, I don't have that provision, actually. I should have brought it up. So why don't we take, why don't we take a look at that? Because she would like to add, you would like to add, make it clear that we're going to have that neighbor, assuming that the state code...
Well, no, when I'm, when I'm always, you know, I'm sort of climbing up this hill always, about, let's have conformity with the state land use article. And the state land use article says that, you know, a person aggrieved may file a zoning appeal. You're saying here, a zoning appeal may only be filed by the property owner or someone authorized by...
Well, the intent, of course, is that only the property owner would be aggrieved by that if you have a neighbor, so your interpretation, that it's much broader than that, I think we'd have to take a look at that.
We have it now. Why do we want to drop it?
Where are we?
Go on page 86.
Is it there?
Is it on page 86?
It's on page, I'm sorry, it's line 11. Maybe the problem is, that maybe the problem is having the phrase "zoning appeal" in that line. Maybe that's the problem.
Well, if you, if you have an amendment, and you want to change anything, submit it to the, to the committee. Is that what she, you have, is this an amendment? I mean, is it a procedure you're discussing?
It's going to be a big, fat, hairy amendment, yeah.
Well, then, have, have, let it be a Joan Floyd amendment. It's considered. It's duly noted. She, Councilwoman Clark, you got...
Sorry, I, I'm waiting to go through this page by page because I'm not, I'm not there yet. I'm trying to figure out what Joan is saying.
We're, we're going through it page by page. We're on page 86, on line 11 of page 86, it says currently, "An application for a variance conditional use, use permit, or zoning appeal must be filed by," and then it lists two categories of people, neither of which includes the concept of...
Right.
Somebody aggrieved by the decision.
So, let me, let me ask a question about that then, if I may. So, a zoning appeal is one thing. I see that, I agree wholeheartedly, that aggrieved neighbors should and do have the right to appeal, let's say, my colleague owns a piece of property, she wants to build the deck on the roof, I don't know, it's too big. She gets permission to do it from the zoning board. I live next door, she's blocking my son. I want the...
Well, that wasn't what, that wasn't the decision, that wasn't what she was talking about. She was talking about an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision. If the board had made a decision, the neighbor would have had a chance to go to the, to the board hearing and say something. But if something, if a decision is made by the zoning administrator, then, under current state law, you can appeal that decision to the board if you're in a aggrieved party.
So, and that belongs on page 86, 911?
The suggestion I was about to make, and I think that this is going to be the, I don't think it's actually that big and hairy of an amendment. I think it's just that there should be a third Roman numeral that, that has the, like, so, under, on, on, under, under an application for a variance, "must be filed by," one, the owner of the property to which the application applies, strike the "or," two, a person expressly authorized by the owner in writing, comma, "or," and then a Roman numeral three, using, and then Roman numeral three would just be the language from the state code saying whatever it says.
I mean, that would be, that would be right. What I'm trying to say is that I don't have that state code...
Yeah, no, I get that. I get that.
And assuming that Ms. Floyd is correct, then that would be exactly what you're describing.
Right. Okay. That's all I was going to say.
Okay, and here's my question, and, so, help me go along with what's being said. I can't apply for a variance on my neighbor's property. I can't apply, I'm reading, I don't see where we're at appeals. I can't ask for a conditional use on my neighbor's property or a use permit, but I can appeal a decision that's been made, which is different, and so, it's all in the same sentence. So, when we add in a neighbor as being eligible, we're adding them in to do all those things when we're trying to add them in, I'm on page 86, line 11, when we're trying to add them in for the right of appeal of decisions only, we can't give them the right to put in a application for a conditional use or an application for...
But, but, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want to cut you off.
I'm finished.
You, you can't apply for a variance as an aggrieved party because you're not aggrieved by anything. What makes you aggrieved is someone made a decision and it impacted you negatively. So, the only one of these four categories of application... So, the only one of these four categories of application that involves someone else already making a decision is the last one, a zoning appeal. In applying for a use permit, a conditional use, or a variance, no one has made a decision yet. That's what you're applying for. You're asking for someone to make a decision. But you can appeal a decision that's already been made.
So you're, you think that the word aggrieved covers that, okay?
And that's, and that's, that's what Victor's gonna confirm, when he's gonna...
Is that correct?
Yeah, we, let's, let me, let me confirm that. I mean, I'm...
Okay, because I think it's, I'm, I have a situation right now where I'm pretty aggrieved that they even asked for a variance. And I'd like to appeal their right to do it.
Now, I should point out, I should point out that we do have, we have a whole section on page 330 of the code, of the, of the new code, that talks about appeals.
Well, page 330, we'll probably get to sometime in 27 minutes.
Yeah, it's a long, it's a long way, it's a long way away. But the point of the exercise is, we have to make sure that dovetails with what, what, what Ms. Floyd is talking about. So, you know, I, let's, we can tee this up and sort of move on, and I'll, I'll make sure that we, we've got...
That's, that's why I say it's duly noted. Okay. Any...
I, I just had another question.
Councilman Craft?
Yeah, and I wanted to just follow up on what Councilwoman Clark was saying, and just being sort of a devil's advocate, or, or something, I don't know, but, pain in the, whatever. But, when you talk about the variance, suppose, using the variance from a reverse argument, somebody comes up and says, you know, you're building up the, the property line, or you're building up five feet from the property line. I'm the next-door neighbor. I feel aggrieved. You know, I'd rather you have, if, if you build up 10 feet from the property line, that would be okay with me, but five feet from the property line's too close. Does this give me a right, as an aggrieved party, to come in and somehow ask that you apply for the variance, that, that there be some sort of variance that may be available, as a reverse type of procedure? And I don't know. I'm just like, putting it out to some...
Well, there's already the possibility of a negative appeal.
Right, and so what I'm saying is, are we starting to open other doors in these other areas if we put aggrieved party as a person who could do these things? You know...
If we're gonna do it, let's do it now. I could use it.
Right, or, you know, I mean, the same thing on conditional uses. You know, could we start having an aggrieved party coming in saying, well, you know, I, you know, I don't mind if they have it, if they have it under these conditions. These are my conditions. You know, so they can come in and say, I'd like to see them do it under these conditions. So, it's, 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 like I say, it's a reverse of a administrative, like, opening up administrative proceeding by an outside person.
We do, the, the term aggrieved person is used in our, in our appeals section. So we're gonna capture them. The question is how it dovetails. Because Mike, when I read this, I thought, what we're trying to capture is that if we're gonna have an administrative process, we're gonna capture a fee with it. And that's why you have, that's why you have it now. And that may not be what, what Ms. Feinberg wants, but that's how I was reading what was going on here. But it needs to be, it needs to be coordinated with what we have in the, in the appeals section.
You agree? I understand what you're saying.
Let me just...
If I, if I may finish just for a second. You know, I think this may be the front end. I mean, this part may be the front end. This is, I'm applying. This is the initiation of the process.
Right.
That's what this is. This is not the back end. This is the beginning. This is where we begin. So no one is appealing anything or anything. We're just coming in and saying, I want to start the process.
Yeah, it is.
What is wrong with taking out the word, taking out zoning appeal? Just taking it out of here? Does it really have to be here? That's, I guess that's probably what, what got me concerned to begin with. If we do have an appeals section, does it, does that phrase need to be in this section at all?
Well, it's, well, it's a, could the planning, should say, Laura, you want to answer that? Why they have zoning appeal when they put an application in for a variance or conditional use or a permit? Why is the zoning appeal must be filed by? Why is...
Maybe this was the wrong terminology here, but this chapter deals with a, a zoning change as well, the procedures to change your property. So, in my first read, and I, I'm on the spot here, I have no problem with deleting zoning appeal, because I don't think that's...
At all.
It's application for variances, conditional use, text and map amendments, I think, covers it.
Okay.
But again, it's...
Yeah, okay. I get it.
I, I'd like to suggest that after the word "an application", to initiate a variance, conditional use, use permit, or zoning appeal be considered. And that way, you can leave it in, because the application process is the issue here. And so, the, the fact that somebody may appeal it should be addressed separately. But, but this is initiating an action. And so, if you can insert that word, I think that would clarify it all. And then you can leave the zoning appeal, because some, somebody is gonna initiate that zoning appeal. You can protest it in the appeal process.
Okay. That's, that's noted, yeah.
Why have we decided, please, Mr. Chair, to initiate?
Yeah, and then we're gonna, then we're gonna scratch off, or zoning appeal must be filed by, correct? Take out zoning appeal. Because the back end, the back end on page 330 is the appeal, so it's not...
I defer to others on that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm comfortable with the "to initiate".
Okay.
Let me just say one thing, which may or may not be relevant. You do have to file a zoning appeal. In other words, a person has to, you don't just end up at the zoning board without applying to. In other words, you go to the permit office, they reject you and refer you to the zoning board for an appeal. You then go up there and they say, "Fill out this application." Then you may or may not, doesn't matter, you'll still get your hearing, but nonetheless, you apply. So, I, I'm not gonna, I, I mean, I support Ms. Floyd's, I, what she's, the underlying and consistent issue of neighbors having the, the public having the right to appeal decisions. I just, I'll take it to initiative.
Victor, yeah, Victor?
I'm saying that we can, if we, if we, I'm sorry.
Right, let's...
Fill in, okay.
Okay, I mean, well, I was gonna say that if we, if we struck appeal here, we can, we can handle any issue that may arise with an appeal...
On page 330.
In the further, in the, in the section on page 330.
Yeah, I get it, okay? That'll work, yeah.
A permit, it flips it up to the zoning board anyway. What's the difference?
Okay, we're still on page 86.
I have no amendments tonight, Mr. Chairman. I, I am relying on the President's people to lay them out in, as we get to them on the pages.
Yeah, okay. Duly noted. Anything, anything else on 86? No? Okay, page...
This is in the President's Amendment. So, the, the language in the Second Amendment here, after deletes, insert at line 15, if legislation has been introduced on the subjects provided in five, is that 201? Is that 201A? Of this subject, "On behalf of the owner of the property to which the legislation, property owner or person expressly authorized by the property owner in writing..." I don't recall, do we have a, is, is there in the law somewhere, and maybe something I forgot from before, a method for this expressly authorizing a property owner in writing to act for someone? Do we have a process that constitutes doing that?
That, that tracks the language just above there, when you're talking about how you, how you file. And what, all we've done here is just take the same language and insert it.
Right, it's, it's deleted, though. In the President's Amendments, lines 15 to 23 are deleted in the amendment, and this is...
We don't, yeah, if the, if the question is, what do we require as proof?
So the property owner can, somebody can come in with a piece of paper that says that Councilwoman Clark authorized me to do this for her, but there's no way of document, there's no requirement that that be documented in any way. All I have to do is walk in with a piece of paper that says, the property owner said I can do this.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would probably be right, the way this, the way what we have here. I mean, of, of course, they can clarify that by regulation if they wish to. So we don't necessarily have to be specific, but we could be.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure that we have some way to, to make certain that we've documented that, because we're gonna run into that problem where somebody's gonna come in and say, "I have the authority to act for Ms. Floyd", and Ms. Floyd's gonna walk in and say, you know, "Who's he? I never told him that he could come in and represent me." You know, so, that we gotta find some way to fix that, or at least clarify that in there somewhere.
But, but to follow up on, on Councilman Craft, I mean, there has to, it's an application. It's a form that they have to fill out, right? And it's gotta be in writing, and they have to have the authorization from the owner that, hey, on his behalf, right? So that's...
I think housing is here, but they, they have experience with this on the permit applications.
Okay.
There's something similar, where you sign and say, you know, you're on behalf, yeah, of the owner.
And the same, I believe the same, I know the same holds hill, holds, for zoning board applications. I mean, you've got a lot of contractors who represent people at the zoning board, as well as at the permit desk. And so whatever system they have right now for verifying, we should double-check if housing could do that, just to make sure they do have a system in place. It happens every week, every day. But, that's a good question, because how does anyone know? Especially if somebody's out here representing Ms. Floyd. She would like to know, I know that. I would too.
I got so many papers, you'll follow me. Page 87, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, we have a relatively minor amendment on page 87. It is our amendment 5-7, and it's fit, page...
What line?
Uh, okay, it is 201D1, line 29. And it, this is the section where it requires a site plan for conditional use or variance must be included with the drawings. And the Planning Commission voted to make an exception to the site plan requirement if the use is only internal and there's no site that's relevant to the conditional use. So it would be at the end of that sentence to say, "Except for..."
At, at the end of 29, Laura?
Uh, the end of line 29.
Which says accompanied by a site plan.
Site plan, and then it would be, "Except for a use that is entirely internal to an existing building."
Any other amendments? Page 87?
It just came to me, the question about the ownership and who can initiate it. I recently went over to the permits office to get a permit on a city-owned property. And what they required was a right of entry from the owner to, to get the permit and to initiate that process. And so, I assumed that the right of entry would not only come from the city being the owner, but the property owner if it was a non-government entity as well.
And that's basically a procedure that they have in place already.
It's a written document that I had to produce in order to get a permit to do something.
I just, I just wanna, whether you agree, but as Chairman, we're, looking over the last seven or eight hearings, work sessions we've had, is that, is that, what I like to do is try to focus on the amendments and concerns to the amendments, because I've found out, looking at the amendments, I mean, looking at the minutes from the past work sessions, we seem to get off-track on the amendments. And we're looking at, like, who does this or who does that? So, any questions or concerns regards to the process on whether it's housing or DPW, or the zoning administrator? I think that's something that if we have a question or concern, like, like what you're asking about, the, the, it's a process that goes with a permit. Well, then, that answer could be answered by the Housing Department. This is not where we should be discussing a process when the permit department, I think we should be dealing with what the amendments are. And I know that sometimes we may need clarity, but I don't want to see us really get sidetracked going to something completely different than what we're supposed to be focusing on. So, anything else on page 87?
Mr. Chairman, I know that we're going sequentially, and I must apologize to you that I cannot absorb all these amendments this quickly.
That the President came, yeah.
This quickly. So that, I, I would like to say that I would like the opportunity, and I think all of us, I'd like us to be able to either discuss these amendments as we come to them on the page, or reserve the right to come back. I thought I knew what the amendments were. I'm not sure I do. And I'm really interested in this title, because it's crucial. And so, I, I'd like to follow this sheet of amendments, so that we can see where they fit into the pages as we go through, and what they mean, and what changes they make, if I may.
No, I, I, I agree 100%.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we're done, page 87. Now we're on page 88, and there are amendment on page 88. Who's amendment was that? On page 88, applications, the President? Okay. That was line 12, strike, okay, he did that. So, Councilwoman, do you...
All right, so, on page 88, line 12, strike, Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals. So basically, what exactly is, if I may ask, the President's rep? What is the, what are we doing here?
This amendment deletes, so it says that applications submitted to both the zoning administrator and the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, we delete the reference to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, because on the previous, on page 86, where it first talks about how you apply, things go just to the zoning administrator. So it would make sense that if you're going to have to amend your application that you submitted to the zoning administrator, the only person that you would amend things to would be the zoning administrator. So then, any amendments go to him, and then he disperses them to other agencies or departments as needed.
So after an application, he determines it to be complete. Any change made to the application must be submitted to him.
Yes.
I say him, because he happens to be him at the moment.
Right.
And no later than 50...
And no later than fifteen days before the hearing. So, the hearing is held by the zoning board, is it not? So, does that, and then what happens? He gives it to the zoning board?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lines twenty-two to twenty-four.
She, do you have a question on that?
On that same section, do you want me to address that now or wait?
What, okay, keep it...
The question, the comment is on that same section? Do you want me to wait or address it?
No, wait for Councilwoman Clark, I thought you had a question, go ahead.
No, I'm just following right now the President's amendments, and I, they're on line twenty-two and to twenty-four. So if, if they're next, fine, and if they're not, go.
Chairman, what...
Now, we're going, we're going back, let me finish, we're going back on the, we're also going back on the President's amendments, but there's other amendments from other entities, you could present that. So, you have a question on page eighty-eight?
Lines twenty-two to twenty-four.
Now you want to ask on twenty-two and twenty-four. And then if you have an amendment or whatever, then we'll go back to you, go ahead.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying?
It's being, the President recommends that we strike lines, on page eighty-eight, lines...
Twelve.
Two twenty-two to twenty-four.
Twenty-two, twenty-four, okay.
So, scope of section. This section does not apply to an application for the reclassification of property that is or was a subject of a proposed comprehensive rezoning. What does that mean?
So, we actually found the, that scope of section description confusing and unnecessary because this section then goes on to talk about, and it's the same language that exists today when a zoning application has been denied, there's a one-year waiting period before you can go back to the BMZA.
That's what they tell me.
So we deleted this first scope of section regarding the comprehensive rezoning because it doesn't seem to, it doesn't seem to do anything, and we didn't think it needed to be there.
So it's just add, it's just...
Just a deletion, and we don't replace it with any...
It doesn't mean anything, so it doesn't mean anything to take it out. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going...
On page eighty-eight, right?
Yes, but going back...
What line, where are you at?
Going back to lines, I would like to go to lines twelve, no, ten to thirteen. And actually, and actually, I'd like to go to, I, um, line, line fourteen, well, line ten through fourteen, okay. That's the subject of my, my comment here. I, going back to remembering the BMZA reforms that we worked on a couple of years ago, and got some changes, I remember the issue of completeness coming up, and I remember the issue of how we would deal with changes that were made, you know, after the application was available for us to see, and how, and what, what our, in the community, what our, you know, situation was when these would, would come up. And I, and I see the rationale for the fifteen days. You know, you can't come in right a couple, a couple of days before the hearing and come in with a change. However, that rationale seems to kind of, kind of be defeated by line fourteen because it still allows someone to come in on the day with the change. And I think we talked in years past about how if they were going to do that, they needed to have a continuance so that people could, could respond to that change. Because once it comes up at the hearing, there is no opportunity to...
Absolutely.
So that's what I, what was my comment.
Councilwoman Kraft?
No, I totally agree with that. I think we've all been in those cases, and we're in them regularly, where not only do we have instances where there are changes made, but today, I mean, not today, but last week, we had an instance where the application was incomplete, and yet, the case was still on the docket in anticipation of the documents being provided by the time of the hearing, the additional information being provided by the time of the hearing. The request was made for a postponement because the information wasn't there yet. The postponement wasn't ruled on pending the information arriving, which makes no sense. So, you know, I think there has to be some sort of language, and I don't know whether, whether it's substance or, you know, but there's got to be some sort of thing where you have a, a measure of what that is. If there is something that's substantive that is changed to the application, then I think that the hearing has to kick out. If it's something that's not substantive, then the hearing could continue. But I think it needs to have something like that.
I would like to...
Amendment to it, or...
Agree with Ms. Floyd, agree with my colleague. I'm dealing right now with a CHAP hearing. I now learn over the phone, oh, you haven't seen the latest application to CHAP, now, a site plan. Now, there is a deadline for submissions that is way past. And no, I haven't seen the latest, I have the one that was required to be delivered to the community and to CHAP from the developer. I haven't seen anything else. Now, I'm going into a hearing Tuesday. So basically, I want to go back to the zoning board on this one and say, delete that sentence, and thank you for focusing on it. There is absolutely no way that there should be changes after fifteen days before a zoning board hearing, substantial or minor, because who's going to define substantial, which is another issue I'm dealing with? Whoever it is won't talk to us till we walk in the door.
Okay, so should we delete, you want to delete this?
Delete the whole sentence. Take it out. There is no wiggle room fifteen days before your zoning hearing. What you have in is what you got in, nothing later. Period.
We have it, delete it, okay?
I think we've got the votes on that one right now. Move approval.
We're not making no motions now, but it's, we got it done, it's deleted, to be deleted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page, we're still on page eighty-eight, and that was ten through fourteen, right, Ms. Floyd? Just fourteen? Okay, line fourteen and two, okay. Yeah, you got that? Page eighty-nine, anyone have any? Yeah. Councilman Henry?
Well, there was also on eighty-eight, we, President's amendments included removing lines twenty-two through twenty-four.
Page eighty-nine?
You did that, okay, all right, okay, then, then, on eighty-nine, I have a question.
Page eighty-nine, what line?
About, may, well, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a larger question, it's, but I'll, I'll give you the reference. On lines twenty-three and twenty-four, where it says, "A reduction in the number of off-street parking spaces by no more than ten percent of the applicable minimum requirements, that constitutes a minor variance." And so the assumption I'm making here is that anything from eleven percent up to seventy-five percent is a major variance, but that doesn't appear to be separately articulated, no?
Just a point of clarification. For those that are familiar with the existing code, there is the seventy-five percent variance to the board. In drafting this new code, that was intentionally left out because our experience has been that if you write that the board has the authority to give X number of variance...
That's what people ask for.
They just do it automatically, and sometimes, with all due respect to the board, they don't really consider the proper variance standards. So, this code expressly prohibits those numbers for the reason that it should be that every variance, not to prescribe a number to it, but that every variance should meet the standards of uniqueness and hardship under a variance, that that is a cleaner approach. And this section on minor variances is really based on the current legislation that Council passed a couple of years ago to deal with some of the challenges with row houses because it's awful hard to, you know, we had a case, Councilman Kraft is very familiar with it, in Islandtown, where a house was being renovated, just to bring it up to code and have the proper stairway widths, they needed a small variance in the yard, and it was, I think, two feet. They went to the board, there was, there was some issues, and it got approved, but then it got appealed, and the court said, no, you, you can't really prove that this row house is unique and therefore eligible for this kind of variance, which really creates an undue hardship when somebody's trying to modernize a, a row house. So this section, minor variances, was created modeled on the legislation that Council passed to deal with those types of situations so that there's a little wiggle room, and, and we had to get, get actually some state-enabling legislation to be able to do this, to give us whatever other jurisdiction has on that. Anyway, long story short, there is no upper number, and the minor, so, if, it's, it's either minor or major.
Well, that's good and bad for my purposes then, because my intention had been to somewhere way later where it actually had the specific numbers, that was where I was going to ask for an amendment where we would cap what the board could do at a substantially lower number than seventy-five percent, and create a separate process by which if you needed a larger variance, it would follow a by-ordinance process. Is that where, next, all right.
Well, I mean, I think the, the President's amendment dealt with the twenty-five percent on bulk. I don't think I saw anything on the parking.
I think, then I think that's where we're, I think that's where we're going then.
Where?
Right, okay, so, it just means that when we get to page ninety, we might need to clarify that that refers to parking as well. Okay, I got you, all right, thank you.
Councilman Clark?
Let's go back to what, to the issue that the Councilman raised. I realize that the President has no amendments on this page. I'd like to take, I'd like to take number, Roman numeral three, right off the page, whereby the zoning board, on page eighty-nine, whereby the zoning board is allowed to go up as a, high as a ten percent waiver of the required parking spaces. I don't want the zoning board to have any waiver rights under, under their powers for parking spaces. Oh, is it, well, what is it, the administrator? Well, that's even less public. So, I, I would not want the administrator, I would not want the administrator to have any powers to waive off-street parking spaces that are required by code because in my district, more and more every day, there's no place to park. And if somebody wants to build something, they need to provide off-street parking.
Councilwoman Kraft?
Yeah, I would say that I probably have more parking, I'd challenge anybody that has more than, maybe probably Councilman Cole in Federal Hill, but I don't think there's anybody that has more than that in terms of parking difficulties. So, I'm reluctant to take this out, even though I have those parking difficulties, only because I think at some point, you know, at some point, we've got to just force people to stop having cars. And if we stop building parking lots, and we stop telling them that they have to provide off-street parking spaces, then they just won't be able to buy more cars because there literally will be no place to park them. So, you know, at some point, we've got to figure out some way to do it, and I'm not sure if this is, gets me there or not, I got to think it through a little bit more, we're still early, but can we just think about it a little bit more before we take it out? But my, my inclination is to try to find a way to just force people to have fewer cars, and whatever mechanism we can do.
I understand, Councilman, oh, oh.
Actually, I wanted to respond to two very specific things about that. One is, I, I completely understand and agree in terms of the, at some point, we got to get people out of cars, and that's going to mean that we won't need as many off-street parking spaces, but we got to give them better mass transit before we're going to get them out of cars, and not everybody has the circulator yet.
You know, just not to engage in a mass transit debate because that's a whole other issue, but, you know, I know this is almost a chicken and egg argument, but at some point, we just have to bite the bullet and...
And expand the circulator, exactly.
And, and it's going to be cars first before it's going to be mass transit.
But the specific thing I wanted to say was, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with thinking a little bit more before we remove this particular part, the ten percent, but I do strongly believe that the board should not be able to grant larger ones. And when we get to that, we'll, we'll talk about it.
If I may, this is the administrator. I have, we do not, we love the First District and admire Canton, but we know we don't want to be like Canton. And I've already got people, only because there's no place, it's like Charlie on the MTA. So, basically, I don't want, however qualified, a person named an administrator in an office, sitting with a pile of papers, giving a ten percent break on the parking requirements for a development because I want that to at least be where people can be for or against that kind of relief. Not just walk in an office on a busy day and get someone to sign off on it. We don't, we're not voting now, but I have people in my neighborhoods saying this to me.
We can...
That they need to find a permeable material that meets the building code because on Elm Avenue and West Thirty-Eighth Street and the vicinity of that rotunda in Hampton, they need to build parking pads behind their houses to survive now. And so, they, I need not to have this...
It's, Councilwoman, stilly noted, we understand.
Just a point of clarification. And they don't have the alleys. A point of clarification for the Council, the minor variances are not administered automatically. The zoning administrator, as described in five three oh four, it must be posted on the property, and they can be only issued if no one files a complaint after, I believe it is ten days of posting. If the posting goes up and there is a complaint, then it goes to a full board hearing. So we, we put that in there to, to try to achieve that balance.
If I may, say one thing.
We're not going back into the neighborhood again, are we, I mean?
Just to ask you to take a picture. Just to ask you to take a picture of a posted notice on Crittendon today. It is lying in a pile on the grass.
Councilwoman?
That's a procedural.
Still, still, still on, still on 89, still on page 89. I guess I do have a question, then, in terms of where it says on lines 10 and 11.
On page 89?
Still on page 89.
10 and 11?
The variance procedure applies only to changes in bulk and yard requirements. It does not apply to changes in the uses allowed within its zoning district. Just as a clarification, is parking considered a bulk and yard?
Thank you for bringing that up. That's our amendment on, that was a typo, and that is our amendment, blah, 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 5-8, that it should include signage, parking, and loading. The point of that sentence is really to make it clear that you can't by the variance change a use, but we inadvertently left out the signage, parking, and loading.
Between calling attention to your amendment and calling attention to the President's amendment, it sounds like my work here is done, so thank you very much.
Um, oh.
Joan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the same section, I'm going to go back to, there's a comment that I made at the prior session about the need for a definition of bulk regulations, bulk requirements, bulk standards, where we needed to have that, and that comes into play here, where we don't, I don't, you know, I would need that at this section as well. So are we getting any closer to having something like that?
I think we agreed on that when we.
I believe that was agreed to be done when we talked about the definitions in Title I.
It's stilly, we're going to.
Well, we, we don't have it yet, a working definition.
No, it's a work in progress. It's like trying to change flat tires while it's moving.
Did, I mean, we can work with your office to draft that. I didn't realize that that was, that ball was in our court, if you're.
Question.
Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would maintain that parking is a use, and I would ask that we not adopt Plannings Amendment to its, Amendment to its provisions. I think it was very fortunate that they made the description that they did that says it applies to bulk and yard requirements. Parking is the use of a land, and I know we're not voting on that now, but I just want that in the record.
Okay, so you're, in the record, you're noting that you do not support the Prey and Department's Amendment.
I do not.
Okay.
I do not support that, and I do not support item, Roman numeral three.
We have it. Care, we have it? Okay. We're still on page 89? Okay, now we're on page 90, and I know that the President had his amendments to 90, so we're, right now, page 90, the President's Amendments, and then if there's any questions on his amendments, then we'll go to any amendments from anyone else.
Okay, so we have the President's Amendments, page 90, at line four. All right. Any questions about the President's Amendments on page 90, line four?
I would just like to note that we will amend our amendment, which specifies the BMZA can't do more than 25%, clarify that that's bulk and yard, and either parking or not parking, or signage and not signage, as the case may be. And then we added in language that says any greater variance must be authorized by legislation, so if somebody has a major variance where they're asking for more than 25% of a deviation, it would come to the city council.
Yeah, yeah, Councilwoman.
I'm just going through my mind real quickly, it's easy. Do we have currently legislative power to go beyond the 25%? I don't remember ever doing so.
You do not. You're limited in the current zoning code, and this would allow you more of the property needed.
I'm not sure we should, I mean, what is zoning really? Zoning is really a guarantee to people that own property, that there are certain things that cannot happen to them, that there's a certain stability in that ownership guaranteed by the municipality through its zoning law. That's what zoning is. So even though we are trying to put ourselves back into this code by amendment, and I fully support that, I also know that we are still part of government, and that as such suspect, and I would question whether we should give ourselves the power to deviate more than 25% from what every owner is relying on in terms of what can happen next door.
I think it's a good point. I think if you, when you start getting up higher than that, the exception becomes the rule.
Really? And we'll be beat up on by who knows what to change the nature of neighborhoods, and I find it changing already with just the 25% in ways that people find very scary. So, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman, microphone.
Mr. Chair, what my colleague is speaking to is that it can only be 25%.
Right.
And that, that's enough.
Really?
Right, okay.
We shouldn't go crazy here.
Got it. Ladies and gentlemen, the Vice President had to chair a meeting in his district, and he was late for that, so we're excusing him to do that. Page, President's Amendments, page 90, deletes lines seven to 12, inserts new words on line 13. Ms. Kluns, do you want to discuss any of that?
Just to say that the initiation, we delete it here and in other places, because the beginning of this title discusses initiation, and we can't see it in multiple places, because it could cause potential confusion or conflict, so we delete the references to initiation here and in each of the other subtitles, mostly, yes.
All right. We're still on 5303. Anybody else in 5303? Okay. 5304, on page 90. Anybody, anybody there? Okay. Page 91, line five, President's Amendment, very simple insertion there, major variance by the BMZA. Okay. There are no other President's Amendments on page 91. Is anybody else? Ms. Floyd? Okay.
Thank you, a couple of things. First of all, on page 91, lines two through four, and I, you know, hope Mr. Willis will weigh in on this issue, and it has something to do with the issue I brought up earlier about the land use article in the state. It seems that, when we look at the bottom of page 90 and the top of page 91, it seems like we're creating a system whereby the neighbors will waive their right to appeal if they don't come in at the zoning administrator's stage. That seems to be what this is setting up here, where there's a posting, and you must come in at that stage and have an objection, otherwise you're going to waive it, and as according to the top of page 91, you are not going to be able to appeal to the BMZA. So I have two, two thoughts about that. One is, does this not actually create a conflict with the land use article, which gives the aggrieved person the right to appeal to the BMZA? The second comment is, and this is kind of, it's kind of funny that Councilwoman Clark brought up a posting issue, because the question would then be, well, what if the posting doesn't really happen? And we have these situations where the posting doesn't happen. Now, I can't speak to a zoning administrator situation where posting doesn't happen, but I know there are BMZA situations where posting doesn't happen, and it may still go forward. So posting doesn't guarantee that anyone knows about anything.
Let me ask this of our lawyers. So if we're looking at the bottom of page 90, which is sort of the lead into the appeal, so if no written objection is timely received, the zoning administrator must render a written decision on the application within 30 days of the end of the required posting period, and either approve, approve with qualifications, or deny the application. So we have the predicate, and that is the decision, the written decision has been issued, okay? Now, the next paragraph, which is Ms. Floyd's referring to, or the one to which she refers, is, "If aggrieved by the decision of the zoning administrator," and it says, "The applicant may appeal that decision to the BMZA." What if we just changed that word, "the applicant," to "the aggrieved party may appeal?"
I think this is covered. Again, procedurally, the idea is, you want to put a small addition on your house, you're within the 10%, you go to the zoning administrator, he said, "This is within the 10%", he pulls out his rules and his posting sign, and it goes up. And then if there is objection, if you look at Section B at the bottom of page 90.
No, but this, the language of the decision says, "if no objection's received."
Right. If no objection is received by the zoning administrator, he can issue the permit or not issue the permit. If the property owner, if he doesn't issue the permit, the property owner can appeal that to the board.
But, but what we're saying is, what we're saying is, this isn't just a, the issuance of the, the decision of the zoning administrator, whatever, you know, that decision may be something that the aggrieved party, or that someone else may have an objection to, not just the applicant. The person may not have filed a written objection to the initial application, but when the decision is made, they may not be happy with the decision. So even though they didn't object to it, what we want to do is preserve their right, so, or if the sign blew down, like we're talking about, where a sign blows down, they don't see the sign, the decision is made, they sort of get a second bite at the apple, because the sign is posted, person doesn't see the sign, so they don't write the objection and send the objection in. The zoning administrator issues the decision, the next-door neighbor sees the decision and says, "Oh, my God, how did that happen? How did that happen?" They said, "Didn't you see the sign posted?" The person says, "No, I didn't see the sign posted." And they said, "Well, you do have 30 days to appeal that decision, because you are an aggrieved party. You filed your appeal, and you get your hearing."
Why does it have to be specific in language, aggrieved party? Why can't it just simply say, "A, an appeal can be made after the written decision"?
That would be, anything that opens up.
Don't have to identify anybody.
Right, because the, where it says, "The applicant," right now, it's, it limits it to the applicant under, under line two of that section, it's limiting it solely to the applicant, who it can be the person that appeals. What we want to say is, other people may appeal.
An appeal, an appeal.
Right.
Period, without having to identify who that.
Well, it starts out and says, "If aggrieved by the decision, the applicant may appeal," so you would have to assume that there's something that leads you to appeal.
I mean, chances are, you're not going to be appealing unless you are aggrieved, so, but in the, but we should be staying with state law, because state law says aggrieved party, so if we, as long as we hang on.
Aggrieved person.
Aggrieved person, I hear you.
All right, so that's.
Have to stay with that language of the state law. So that's adequate to cover the landscape we're trying to cover?
Yes.
Okay. And we will, can you write, how do you write, how would you say it?
Should we just insert the word, in line two on page 91, instead of applicant, we would say, "the aggrieved person"? Person?
The aggrieved.
Councilwoman Middleton, is that good? Is that okay with you? Okay.
The aggri.
Okay, okay, aggrieved person.
Yeah, and then I have a question.
Okay, well, we're going to, we're going to change that to aggrieved person, and we're okay on that? Okay. All right. All right.
I know, take your time.
You have it? Okay. Councilwoman Clark?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, let me go back for a minute, if I may, just back up a little bit to this posting, since I'm living with this issue right now.
I don't think that that's.
It's, it alludes to a posting, but my concern is, what, what's, what, you, all right, let me put it this way.
Councilwoman, if you want to, wait a minute?
Yeah.
If we get to Title, if we get, want to break down here a little bit further, it talks about the notice.
And the postings?
What, the notice we get.
But I just want to make sure that they matter.
Right, okay.
I've just learned that they don't, and, in some instances, and that I'd like to make sure they always do if they're, if they're required.
Right. When we get, I think it's subtitle, five, subtitle six is when the notice is.
Okay, I just want to make sure, if it's referencing posting, posting matters.
Okay. All right, we are on, Ms. Trueheart, we're still on the top of page 91.
Correct. And my question is about the 30 days, and does the administrator have discretion in accepting?
No, it's a mandatory language, 30 days.
30 days, so, so if I go away to my summer home, and you post a notice, and I come back on the 31st day.
30 days. Got to be a cutoff point.
Missed the vote.
Yep.
Oh, that sucks. I don't like that.
Well, there's got to be a drop-dead date, you know?
Well, no, that, that you need to give the administrator flexibility for extenuating circumstances.
Yeah, because everybody will have an extenuating circumstance.
Then you need to pick somebody who's got a brain, who can figure out what's good and what's not.
It's just like courts and other things, they have, there are dates that you have to meet, so 30 days is not an unreasonable amount of time. Councilman, Councilman Henry says, "It is a long time to stay at your beach house." 5305, 5, 5305, anything else on 5305? Ms. Floyd?
Thank you. Starting with lines 11 through 12, where we're talking about requiring a hearing to be concluded no more than 60 days from the receipt of an application. I just want to throw a couple shots at that. There are other, there are some reasons for delay that are included on, in this section, but there are other reasons for delay. For instance, one that came up very recently, such as not having enough board members to conduct a hearing. That's a reason there could be a delay. Cancellation of a board docket because there's too, because of a snow event, there's another reason for delay. So I'm not sure that this section is really encompassing all the, I mean, really taking into account this 60-day. into account this 60-day, this 60-day thing, and also what really happens if they don't meet the 60 days.
Well, it says, "Subject to paragraph B," except it's provided in subject and B, and it says, "The applicant may waive the time, the applicant may waive the time limit by requesting a postponement from the BMZA." So there may be other mechanisms in paragraph B for waiving the time limit. So maybe we need to look at other methods for waiving the time limit.
That would be, I think that would be appropriate. And then if I can go ahead on to the line 30 of the same section...
Wait a minute, I want to make sure we have that.
I'm sorry.
All right, line 30?
Yes, line 30. When it mentions the board having to do something upon a majority vote of the board at a publicly scheduled meeting. First of all, the phrase publicly scheduled meeting doesn't really seem appropriate because there is no other kind of meeting that the board can conduct, that I know of. And I think the Law Department may be agreeing with me on this. The other thing, I would just have a question, there's an intention here, and I'd just like to have it clarified, when you're saying majority vote of the board, are you saying a majority of those present or a majority of those, the positions? And that's just asking for clarification?
The, that's an interesting question. I mean, when we say majority vote of the board, are we talking about a majority present in voting? Are we talking about a majority of the quorum? Mr. Willis, you are an expert.
This is a procedural matter.
What are their rules?
Yeah, I mean, I guess what they're going to say, the rules do cover it now, and I don't know what the rules, what they might say.
It's not something that's in the code.
You've got to be talking to a microphone.
I assume we're looking at the rules of the board.
It's not in the code, it's in the rules of the board, and their operating procedures. And they have different rules for different actions on what's a majority, currently.
I know we've had this issue before, because when you have five people, and only three are there, and then you agree to have the three hear it, and then you, they make a two to one decision, then your board is, you know, your board is making a decision, two out of five are making the decision. So the other three could have voted against, but you're allowing those two to make your majority vote. So the question is, do we want to remedy that by statute, or do we want that to continue to go through the operating procedure?
Just as a point of clarification, maybe information for the council on this, through our drafting process, we did hear from many citizens some frustration with the outdated nature of the zoning board's rules, specifically to posting. And as you've noted later in this title, we actually suggested that some of the bare requirements of posting be in statute, as opposed to rules, because they hadn't been updated. But we didn't go to that issue of really their internal operations, more the public side, which was just in the posting.
No, I know, I've written a lot of amendments to this section of the code over the years to try to make them report more and be more public about all of this.
If you're going to be, I think, if you're going to be fooling with this, I mean, you probably want to make a, if you want to say it's always, you should have a uniform rule, unless there's some reason to say this, less than the full membership. So you could put that in a definition, that when we talk about the majority of the board, we could define it that way. But, you know, you probably should be uniform, unless you have some reason why it shouldn't be.
I think we should look at that.
I think we should be careful. I'll tell you why later.
Okay, we can, I know, I think. Let's have the discussion about it, okay?
Let's do that.
All right, so we're looking at line 30 of page 91, line 30, and we're going to review, we're going to review what constitutes a majority vote, okay?
I would also like to put in the record that I want to come back to reconsider, our third time through this code, to reconsider the 60 days in which the board has to do something. Frankly, half the time, I wish the board would just do nothing and leave us alone. And sometimes it works in our favor that way. I don't want to be told that the board's got to hear it, even though this, that, or the other thing, because of the 60, I can hear it now, because of the 60-day rule. And most zoning hearings I've attended in my many years in office, I wish had never been held. Ever.
So we've added to the question with regard to lines...
Yes.
11 and 12 on page 91. What other methods are there for waiving the time limit, other than those in section B? And why 60 days in the first place?
Right, I'd like to address the whole issue of a time limit. I'm against it. I just let it drift forever, usually. Until people move to Florida or something.
5305, anybody else in 5305? Okay, 5306, going from page 91 over to page 92, anybody else on page 5306? Section 5307 on page 92, anybody? Section 5308 on page 92. 5308 on page 92. I've got lines 17 and 18, and lines 24 of the President's amendments. Ms. Kuntz, do you want to talk to us about those two?
These two do almost the exact same thing. It deletes the zoning administrator and Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals as people making findings, because variances are going to be done by those two entities, as well as the City Council, and just writes, "A finding must be made," in on page, lines, rather, 17 and line 24.
Okay. Comments, Councilwoman Clark?
Yes, I'd like to, I can't let the opportunity go by.
Oh, of course.
Pages, 307 on page 902, oh, excuse me, I've got to take my glasses off. The uniqueness, wait a minute, where is it? Okay, here I am, my apologies. 5308, approval standards, lines 16 to 22. These are in the current code and are without a doubt the most confusing collection of words begun with a capital and ended with a period in law. Here's what they say. "In order to grant a variance, the zoning administrator or the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, as the case may be, must find that because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific structure or land involved in unnecessary hardship or practical difficulty, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, would result if the strict letter of the applicable requirement were carried out." I don't think anyone knows what that means exactly, and it's crucial. Because everybody that wants a variance at the zoning board needs to meet the test that's outlined here. And yet, it's, there must be a better way to say what it is. I'm in a situation right now where, for example, we're talking about specific houses, and the uniqueness is the larger land they're on, not the houses. Do you understand what I'm saying? So there's nothing unique about the houses, but the land, you know, it is, but not the houses that are being proposed. So what in the world are we talking about? What does this mean, so that people, all people can understand it, including the zoning board?
The, I mean, this language is all over case law. It's, you know, it's replete. And what they're usually are trying to, what they're trying to do is, it has to be something that's physical, characteristic of the land, of the property that you're dealing with. And what they're trying to distinguish, at least when I read the case law, the most sensitive case law, they're saying, "Look, if you come in and it's just a cost factor, that is not a physical characteristic of the land, and so therefore you can't grant a variance for just a cost factor." Now, if you have some unique...
You expand that part.
And so essentially, that's, you know, to go deeper than that, we'd have to have the facts before us and try to figure out how they sort of shake and bake. But essentially, what we're talking about is something that's physical, as opposed to just, as we say, a mere inconvenience, which to me is just code word for saying, "Look, it's too expensive, I can't do it."
So that's the best we're going to be able to do, because it comes out of case law, so we will continue not to really understand it and what it is. What we're, I understand what you are saying, that it is unique, I understand what you're saying, that it's not, that, but there's another provision that talks about cost, where you can't just be doing it because you want to make more money. But what is, see, well, okay, can you try to find a better way to say what this case law is trying to say, for the benefit of everybody? Thank you. I think it's really important if there's a way. It is hard.
So...
Well, that's a whole different part of the same thing.
Okay, so we're going to look at lines 16 to 22 here, and see if we can build a better mousetrap.
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Ms. Floyd?
Yes, we need a better mousetrap, but I'm going to make a different suggestion. I would suggest that the problem isn't in the language, it's in, it's in the dysfunction that we find at the zoning board.
Sorry?
You can't fix it, I mean...
Well, no, actually, there are things that we're not requiring, apparently, that perhaps can be put into this code. For instance, our zoning board...
Let's not, let's stick with 5308 and the required findings.
They don't, they don't make the findings. They don't make the findings.
We're not, but I'm saying, I don't want to go into what their cases are, I want to talk about...
No.
This language.
Right, but it doesn't matter what the language is, if the zoning board doesn't actually make the findings, if they just vote yes or vote no, they don't discuss these issues at all. And I agree with the Law Department, there is tons of case law on this, but it should be the zoning board discussing, deliberating on this issue, and making an informed decision that they're willing to stand by, and that they're willing to sign and vote on, and none of these things happen.
Okay.
So, yes, I agree.
But we can't, we, that's another issue, yeah. You know, we can write a commandment that says, "The zoning board must do its job."
No, 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 there are findings...
And that's the next section, it says, "The other required findings," right here. It's all outlined right here, what they must do.
I know, and it's in the current code as well.
I know.
And then, and then, we're told...
What we're saying is, they don't do it, but we don't want to have a lengthy discussion of...
Okay, no, I'm not, I'm not being, talking about personalities, I'm talking about the institution.
Yeah, but we're spelling out in the bill what their standards are and what they're supposed to do. Okay? We're not going to sit here and talk about why they don't do it, or what they don't do.
No, but we could admit, we could put something in this code that will make a requirement that might...
Give us the language.
What is it?
Right, give us the language.
Not right now, but, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Why pick on an easy target?
He said, "Why pick on an easy target? It's hard."
Page, 5308 on page 92, anything else on that? Going on to page 93, the remainder of 5308. Okay, 5309 on page 93. 5309 on page 93, 5309, go ahead. Ms. Floyd?
Line 17 under 5309.
Okay.
This is a real change from what we have now. The ability of the BMZA to make indefinite extensions, you know, just indefinite extensions repeatedly without notice or hearing, the predictability, you know, there's no, there has to be some kind of a limit, and we, and there is right now, there are some limitations in the current code.
Okay, so we're going to just say, what will the limit be? Right?
I would move to delete that section.
All right, I don't think we have enough here for right now, but let's put that in as a...
But I would move to delete, I've got my X marked a month ago.
Okay, so I'm going to put on here...
14 to 17, page 93, delete language that says, "Extension by BMZA,"
Okay, I'm...
...that grants an extension of this one-year period. I am into my third year with an un-terminated case. One-year extension, ending in November of 2013, going into now, it's third year, and this has not yet been terminated as a variance.
I just want to, I just would like to add, I mean, the reason why you have extensions in the first place, because you can get hung up in litigation, and through no fault that somebody's suing you, your time period could expire if you just have just a one-year requirement. So, I mean, so it allows for some flexibility in those types of cases. And this is supposed to be for good cause, I do read the, I do read the language here for good cause. Now, that can be, that's very flexible, of course, but certainly for litigation, that you may not have any control over, and you could just go right past that deadline.
We're not voting on it right now, we have the evidence.
All right, but I, and I would like to say that what happens is, a controversial situation gets approved. A year goes by, somebody comes in with a minor amendment, it gets extended for a year without any notice, then it's, the other year goes by, nothing has happened, no permit has been pulled. Third year. Now, I know I'm not supposed to talk about specifics, so I won't, except, good cause ain't going to make it. I got a neighborhood that turned out by the scores against this thing to begin with, it's dead, and it has not been declared so and put in the ground.
Okay, we've got...
Thank you.
...reclamation from them. 5310, the chart of the variance process, we just need to review that chart to make sure that it will reflect any changes that have been made in these respective amendments. Ms. Kuntz?
Just a note, at the end of each of the subtitles of this, it refers to charts, and all of the charts will need amended based on the changes proposed, adding in council authority, changing processes.
Okay, so we, just make a note that the charts needed amended accordingly, okay? All right, now...
Just for clarification on the charts, just a technical, this was legislative reference, you'll note they're referred to as figures, as opposed to tables to differentiate. Figures are illustrative and not statute, and tables are statute.
Okay, so we'll say, "Figures need to be amended accordingly."
We should call them figures versus tables.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 7:00, and we have been working on two-hour schedules, so we are, we've completed subtitle 3... so we are, we've completed subtitle three of title five. The next work session of City Council Bill 120152, Transform Baltimore Zoning, will be held on Tuesday, April 8th, at 10:00 a.m. We will begin where we ended this evening, on page 93, line 21, subtitle four, conditional uses. Thank you all for attending today's, this evening's Land Use and Transportation Committee Work Session.